This week on The Wheelhouse. The power in politics of. School boards. For Connecticut Public, I'm Frankie Graziano. This is The Wheelhouse. It's a show that connects politics to the people. We got your weekly dose of politics in Connecticut and beyond right here. School board meetings have historically been pretty sleepy. Maybe they'll talk about like property taxes or that new turf football field or maybe trying to get that new turf for the field. But these days, school board meetings sound a lot different.
Stop trying to indoctrinate our children. Diversity, equity, and inclusion. It sounds nice, but it's very scary.
Man, are you reading from a book?
Oh, absolutely. The book that's in your library.
I don't think that's appropriate. There's young people in the audience.
Of course, it's appropriate.
It's a library book. It's not in the curriculum.
It's in the high school lib.
Hey, hey, hey. Whoa, whoa, guys. Come on, come on. Hey, officers, officers, please.
Masks are just the beginning. We're coming for the pornography. We're coming for the woke agenda.
In Connecticut and across the country, school boards, they're becoming political battlegrounds. There's book bans. We're talking about critical race theory there, mask requirements. These have all divided school boards since the early days of the pandemic. On this banned book week, we're going to get into why people are trying to get books and even parts of American history banned, often through angry, sometimes violent means. And you can tell from that audio you just heard, I'm not lying to you here. So why are school board meetings becoming so polarized? We're going to get into that all hour. And here with me are, I bet you she can't believe the accompaniment that we put behind that audio that she has been hearing probably for the last two years. Nicole Carr, reporter from the ProPublica. How are you today, Nicole?
Doing great. Thank you. Yeah, that was quite a compilation.
Oh, boy. We're going to talk about some of those things that you heard over the last couple of years in a moment. I want to introduce our other guests as well. Jonathan Collins, Assistant Professor of Political Science, Public Policy and Education at Brown University. Good morning, Jonathan.
Good morning, Frank. It's a pleasure to be here.
And then Adam Harris, staff writer at The Atlantic and author of The State Must Provide: Why America's Colleges Have Always Been Unequal and How to Set Them Right. Good morning, Adam.
Good morning. Thanks so much for having me.
Thank you for coming on. Hey, we want to know what's happening at your local school meetings. Give us a call right now if you want to join our conversation, 888-720-9677, 888-720-9677. Jonathan, you get the first question. I want to start with the very basics here because I'm sure some of us don't really know what they do. So what are school boards? What do they do and how do they work?
So school boards are these local institutions that sit in the backyard of pretty much every American community. And there's a long history of school boards having very specific governance duties. So they are largely responsible for the budgetary decisions. They are responsible for the hiring and firing of teachers and administrators, pretty much the administrative apparatus of education and schooling. And they were initially designed to be quite a and very responsive to the hyper-localized aspects of education. And so what we're seeing today is a very huge departure from the original design.
And these people are usually elected by people in the town?
Correct. These, the school boards typically follow the same kinds of standards as any other kind of election, typically elected by local members of communities. We've seen different reforms, different types of tinkering with election reforms to where some school board members are appointed or some school board members are elected at large as opposed to through a sort of a subregion ward, but mostly elected, mostly through free and fair elections. There's opportunities for campaigning. You know, your, your school board pretty much follows the same song of, of, of any local political institution.
Nicole, how do we historically think of these school boards?
You know, I can remember working in local television and we would spray the school board. So in TV talk, that meant you just stop by, you get some shots of the audience, get a little soundbite and move on your way. And usually the most contentious issues we would be covering involved redistricting, yeah, that new turf for the schoolyard, some of the things that you mentioned earlier. But I do think we should always remember historical context when we're talking about battleground education. You know, we're talking specifically about the school board meeting here. But some of the fur, some of what we're seeing today, we have been here before in different eras. And so we, we may talk about that a little later on in the show. But some of what I've seen in reporting over the past couple of years took me right back to parental rights movements during integration. So public ed has always been inherently political, although we are dealing with a, a unique era right now as we take a look at the formation of, of new boards that are supposed to be nonpartisan. But we're, we're seeing a shift in how we govern our public schools right now.
So both of you can help me out then, Nicole or Jonathan, whichever one of you want to takes it. So you would say probably Nicole, that during the parental rights kind of movement there, during the civil rights era, that you would say there were more contentious. But was there a period afterwards in, I don't know, towards the end of the 20th century where there was a little bit of more quiet days?
Yeah, I think, I don't think we've seen these types of showings at the school board meetings with the groups of people that we are seeing today. So yeah, there, I don't think we've seen anything quite like this in, in recent memory. Jonathan, I don't know if you would disagree. Some of the arguments we have seen before, particularly when they come to school, vouchers and how we fund education, but in redistricting and those types of things. But what we're seeing, what you just heard, I don't know about that in recent memory.
Yeah, I would agree for the most part. We haven't really seen discussions happening at school board meetings about these kinds of things that are very much rooted in social identity and how people are responding to the changing demographics in America. You look at mid 20th century, and this was very much resistance to school desegregation efforts that were happening across the country, particularly in the U.S. South. And over the remaining of the 20th, 20th century, when we saw discussions happening at school board meetings, they were around different things. It was around different kinds of curricular reform, particularly labor was a particularly large issue. So you would see major contentious battles between labor unions as special interests versus some like progressive minded politicians. But to see the kind of racial and social animus that we're seeing now in school board meetings, this is definitely a throwback to that mid 20th century low point.
Well, let's bring in Adam Harris, staff writer at The Atlantic. Did this really kind of start with the pandemic?
You know, we, we did start to see at the, at the beginning of the pandemic, right? People becoming engaged in part because of school closures, right? Parents effectively starting to show up at school board meetings to say that, hey, you know, we, we are, we are experiencing the, the school closures, we're experiencing this, this disruption to our lives. And, and they would meet with people and, and really start to become engaged. I was talking to one parent from right over in Loudoun County who was like, you know, I've finally got engaged with, with what my student was learning during the pandemic. And, and you know, they would meet with people in the parking lot and talk about things like, like vaccines and mask mandates. And, and it really kind of, these, these sort of cultural hot button issues only sort of exacerbated and grew out during, during the pandemic. And it became a sort of central meeting place for, for folks to really discuss some of those, those cultural issues that, that kind of grew out of the pandemic.
During the lockdown, kids attending school from their homes, does that factor into this equation?
Yes, absolutely. Right. Where, where, you know, oftentimes parents may have been disengaged from their, their students' education. They may not have, have paid as close attention. But some parents would say that, listen, I, I was, was seeing what books they were reading, or I was, I was seeing what their lesson plan was, and I didn't know that much about it. And so they, they began, in some cases, to become concerned about what they were seeing and what they were hearing. And, and in other cases, it was, I've heard something on, on Fox News, I've heard something in another district, or another parent has told me about something that has, has troubled me. And so they became sort of more animated and more involved at the school board meetings.
Jump into the conversation, 888-720-9677, 888-720-9677. Nicole, you mentioned education always being pretty political, but how did, how did they become so polarized?
Well, I know one thing that we've tracked throughout our reporting with this series that we recently wrapped, Chaos at the School Board, was the ways in which parental rights organizations are formed and funded, and the ways in which conservatives have run slates of candidates for the school board these days, rather than these individuals who really leave politics out of their campaign. We are definitely seeing people state their ideological, their political stance and running as a group to, to take a majority on the school board. And as Jonathan mentioned earlier, we know one of the most important functions of the school board is the hiring and firing of staff. This is a policy point. And so there's a lot of power at the school board level. And we also track how a shift in the makeup of the school board results in what we see at a state level. So you don't get to a DeSantis's Florida, or Texas, or many of the states that began shifting toward this anti-CRT legislation in 2021. You don't get to that without the school board level policy. So we're seeing duplicate policy turn into state legislation. And I think when it gets to the state level, that's when people start paying attention. So these are things that I've watched, you know, evolve over the past two years from the simple parental rights meeting or the comment at the school board podium to state law.
Is your local school board becoming more and more politicized? We want to hear from you. Join the conversation, 888-720-9677, 888-720-9677. Adam, we're hearing about a few of these issues already, but what are some of the real core issues at all this unrest?
You know, it started really kind of, as I mentioned, right, with mask mandates, with vaccine mandates. But it's sort of moved into the more curricular things, right, where there have been a sort of crush of reporting and anecdotes from right leaning websites that are effectively saying, oh, well, schools are teaching books that are borderline pornography, right? And, and schools are teaching students to hate themselves. And so parents have really blommed onto that and said that, well, I, I'm now concerned about what my students are reading. And effectively, there is a, a list of books that has been shared around that, that parents are effectively saying, you know, if, if my student is reading this book, then, then that is, that means that they're, they're being taught to hate themselves. Or if my student, my student's school is practicing diversity, equity, and inclusion practices, then, then they are being taught to, to sort of hate themselves, right? And so those, those sort of cultural issues that have grown out and, and been really Republican hotbed topics over the last several years are really kind of the emphasis of some of these school board meetings. And I think one of the important things is, is as both Jonathan and Nicole were saying, right, is that school boards have traditionally been these places where you work out some of the, the fundamental underpinnings of what schools are, right? You think about curriculum, you think about budgets, right? And so much of the meetings are being captivated by these, this sort of outside tangential things, that, that real business of the schools is sort of falling by the wayside in some instances.
Great conversation forming. We're going to talk to Nicole Carr about the work that she's done with ProPublica right at the top of the next segment. Right now, we want to have you call 888-720-9677 if you're interested in what we're talking about. More on school boards coming up. Again, join the conversation, 888-720-9677. You're still listening to The Wheelhouse on Connecticut Public Radio. I'm Frankie Graziano. And with me right now, I still have Jonathan Collins, Assistant Professor of Political Science, Public Policy and Education at Brown University, Nicole Carr, a reporter for ProPublica, and staff writer at The Atlantic, Adam Harris. Is your local school board heating up? Give us a call, 888-720-9677 if you want to talk about it. Nicole, some school board meetings, they got so heated that law enforcement has had to intervene. ProPublica, your work found nearly 60 incidents that led to arrests or criminal charges since the spring of 2021. What are we actually seeing happening at these school board meetings? What does this unrest, this tension look like?
Yeah, it is chaos on top of chaos. That 18 month period that we examined was the spring of 2021 to the fall of, of '22. And we've since seen other incidents. But we also looked at 90 incidents in 30 states where we, we tracked unrest. So on top of the arrests and charges, we looked at unrest. And unrest is defined by, you know, the type of behavior that results in the school board meeting being shut down. I'm thinking about an incident in North Carolina outside of Charlotte where the police had to turn the lights off and, and try to corral everyone out of the building. Or in Utah, where the parents came up to the stage and declared they were the new school board, parents and protesters, they weren't all parents, and declared they were the new school board, since the school board was not doing what they felt they should have been doing. Or instances where we saw assault or threats. We, we look at a man pushing a woman into a parked car in Arkansas outside a school board meeting, a retired teacher who was followed home, and it looks like she has a bullet hole in her window following the meeting and the debate. So we're talking, you know, heightened levels of unrest in that 18 month period. And so we found that nearly every incident happened in the suburbs, and nearly every participant in the unrest was white in our database. And so people ask, well, why, why is this important? I think in order to understand the time, we have to understand not only the issues that people are yelling about or pushing back against, we have to understand the face of the unrest, the geography of it, to really understand what we're dealing with in this time. And so when Adam had mentioned before the break, that people were talking about, you know, my child being made to feel guilty for being something, I've heard this in parental rights training, we're specifically talking about white children in the early era of this, in the spring of '21, when we were talking about the DEI, the CRT, the fights over SEL, those types of things. And so now we have seen the issues evolve from the COVID protocols to anti-CRT, DEI, SEL, LGBTQ books, bathroom policies, curricula, you name it.
I was thinking about, I was thinking about whether it would be gratuitous to put heavy metal music on top of some of the sound that you got. But it's not because it's really representative of the kind of mayhem you're talking about. Like, like you said, parents showing up to a meeting in Utah and declaring that they're the new school board. You had Carrie Nations in one of your articles talking about somebody throwing something at her home. People are not feeling well at this moment. I would imagine that school board members are rethinking about whether or not they want to do this. How are people doing, I guess, Nicole?
That's a good point. I'm glad you brought up those, those scenarios. There is a story out of New Jersey where we talked to one of the most conservative longtime school board members who, who called it quits after his colleague, the school board president, was threatened in the middle of a meeting. A man saying, you know, if you shut this down, we're gonna come to your effing house, you know? And he was just saying that, you know, the tenor of the meetings, the, our inability to have civil discourse in this space made him step back. And it wasn't a political thing, right? Because he was on polar opposite ends of policy issues with his colleague. But this, it had gotten to be too much for him. And so, yeah, we see a lot of school board members who say they're not coming back, educators who say this is not worth it, folks who are now in the political arena and, and running for office, which should be encouraged, right? We should have informed, civically engaged people running for office, but also not sure how school boards work when they run for office. In Berkeley, South Carolina, we see Moms for Liberty back candidates who, in their first meeting, went behind closed doors and got rid of the superintendent and the board attorney right away, without discussion, without understanding how this all works. So we're seeing quite the phenomenon.
Quite a volatile time out there. I want to know if folks are seeing kind of any major shifts in their local school board. They can call us if they'd like to, 888-720-9677, 888-720-9677. Jonathan, I've heard Nicole say the phrase parental rights a few times now. What does that mean? How does that contribute to the polarization of school boards? And who are the people that are kind of clamoring for parental rights?
Well, it's an interesting political tactic because it conflates parents with what is really the behavior of special interests. So when we see organizations like Moms for Liberty, this is a very specialized and organized political group. You know, this is, you know, the group that pretty much initiated the campaign kickoff for the Republican primary. You know, this is an explicitly, an overtly political organization that then is leveraging the idea of parents as a way to, to take that political behavior directly into the school board meeting space. So parent rights on a surface feels like, oh, well, this is just an opportunity for parents to assert their individual rights as the parent of a child who is sending their kid to a public school. But what we're seeing now is the use of parent rights as a guise for a very explicit political behavior. We're talking about, as Nicole mentioned, you know, targeting school boards for getting school board members elected who align with certain kinds of ideological stances. We're talking about completely taking over school boards, destroying the legitimacy of, of school boards. And again, these are explicitly, you know, political acts. This is not a, this is not a civic spirited minded moment that we're seeing from parent rights.
For ProPublica, Nicole, you reported that some of the arrests and interactions with authorities at school board meetings were by design. What do you mean by that? What does that look like?
So we looked at the ways in, in which groups organized going into the, the meeting. For example, we have a story out of New York, a Rochester suburb, where the security guard is the one who ends up, the security guard who removed a parent is the one who ends up facing charges. And he marked the only law enforcement or security type in our database who faced charges for his actions. He was acquitted, but charged with harassment. But we watched the live stream. What I tried to do is delve into what we didn't see in local coverage, the moments leading up to an incident, the moments afterwards. We saw the live stream of the parents figuring out how they would disrupt, how they would go in, and they understood the consequences of going in unmasked, or the ways that they would, would go forward with their protest and, and what could happen from that. And so the conversation in the live stream is, is very revealing when it comes to connections between people and the attitudes of folks, and also the ways that they plan to leverage that moment of contention for conservative news outlets. Within, you know, 48 hours, they are on Hannity, they are on, they're, they're on national conservative networks back to back. And, and this becomes the most viral moment in our database. I've listened to a parental rights training for a story last year out of Georgia, where parental rights groups chased a black educator out of two districts over a DEI and social studies position that she had accepted here. And they were taught how the, to act at a school board meeting to get on to the Tucker Carlson Show. Though, that's by design. I spoke with a gentleman in North Carolina who was arrested. He had joined the Bonds for the Win Movement through organization.
Eric Jensen.
Eric Jensen, right. Who, no one had ever interviewed him. They'd only said, you know, this man was taken down. He had charged the DAAS during the school board meeting with these faux lawsuits, these threats.
And I gotta jump in because we only have like a minute left and I want to bring in Adam one more time. But just really, 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 really quickly, Nicole, Eric Jensen doesn't get, or doesn't serve any jail time. Nobody served any jail time except for some peaceful protesters in Arkansas that were protesting sexist and racist policies in that town?
Sure, sure. College students who had come out to protest anti-trans policy at the local school board after they heard an older gentleman say that gay people deserve death. And they got 10 day jail sentences that are appealing right now. Yes, most of the charges are dropped, prosecutors do not bother with them, and parents go on to leverage these in different types of ways, including wrongful arrest lawsuits against districts.
All right. That's the end of the conversation. Unfortunately, man, I was having a good time talking to the three of you. Adam Harris from The Atlantic. We also have Jonathan Collins from Brown and Nicole Carr from ProPublica. Thank you so much for coming on. This is The Wheelhouse. I'm Frankie Graziano. Join the conversation, 888-720-9677. This is The Wheelhouse from Connecticut Public Radio. I'm Frankie Graziano. This hour, we've been talking about the increasing polarization of school boards across the United States. Still with me are Jonathan Collins, Associate, excuse me, Assistant Professor of Political Science and Public Policy and Education at Brown University, Nicole Carr, a reporter at ProPublica, and Adam Harris, staff writer at The Atlantic. And also joining us now is someone who can help us zoom in on the school board situation here in Connecticut. She works for the Connecticut Mirror. She's an education reporter, Jessica Harkey. Good morning.
Good morning, Frankie. Thanks for having me.
Oh, thank you for coming on. I just want to know if people have questions about school boards in Connecticut or across the country. Join the conversation, 888-720-9677. We have a caller that's been waiting patiently. I'm gonna have her wait just a little bit longer so that I can ask this first question to Jessica. Let's talk about the school boards in the news here in Connecticut. I know the situation in Killingley is a bit different from what we've been talking about, but what's happening there?
Yeah, I mean, the situation in Killingley has been going on for several years. They were offered a fully funded mental health center for their high school students. And at the time, I think it was one in three students were saying that they were struggling with their mental health, they were struggling with suicidal thoughts. And the Board of Education essentially rejected it over political language. And I remember one thing that they highlighted was they were scared that the students would talk about controversial topics, which could include their sexuality, abortion, things like that. And so the community essentially went to the State Board of Education, saying that their local Board of Ed was ignoring student well-being. And it's been a back and forth battle for years since. And so earlier this year, the Killingley Board of Education finally said that they'll sign a contract, they'll move forward with mental health services for students. But community, community members keep saying that nothing has been done. So next week, I think that the State Board of Education is going forward with a hearing to see if this reluctance is still a problem, if Killingley is doing enough, and kind of what they want to do going forward to make sure that these students get the services that they need.
And joining us now, we have a caller joining us from Volantown. Thank you for coming on right now. Betty, go ahead. What's your question?
Hi. So I actually called about the issue with Killingley because I wanted to learn what was going on. So as New York City Mirror journalist points out, there's an issue with the mental health clinic. But this isn't the only issue that's occurred with this school board. Last, last year, they declined to change the name to the mascot as required by the state of Connecticut. And they refused to let go of the name of the Red Men. And they actually lost funding for this. So that's a concern. The other concern, also during the pandemic, the killing, there was a COVID vaccine clinic set up by the Northeast District Department of Health at the Killingley High School, and that was pulled suddenly by the board. So there's lots of concern about what's happening in Northeast Connecticut. So there's lots of concerns about what's happening in Northeast Connecticut.
Betty, thank you so much for calling us. Jessica, what are you gonna add based on what Betty is saying?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's something that the Board of, the State Board of Education is kind of looking into too, is that are these student needs being met throughout the board? I know mental health has been the biggest thing, but again, that also goes to being comfortable in your school environment. If you're uncomfortable with the mascot, like Betty said, the Red Men, how can we make students feel more comfortable going into these school environments? And I think that's the big conversation going forward, especially in Keelingly.
And the most interesting thing about that, just that original issue of the mascot in Keelingly was the kids, the teachers, a lot of people in the town wanted the mascot to be changed to Red Hawks as it was for a while. But then this new school board still changed that no matter what. And as, as you've heard from what Betty said and what you're talking about with the mental health center, just things continue to change. So how do you think things are now in Keelingly?
I mean, I would say that there's still a lot of tension. I mean, that's how the hearing is going forward, is a lot of the community feels like not enough is being done. Like you just mentioned, families are kind of feeling ignored. They were pushing for certain things, and that's kind of the responsibility of a school board, is to listen to concerns from parents, from stakeholders, whether that's family, teachers, students, and kind of go forward making decisions on that. So I would say it's still tense until things actually are done. And that's kind of the hope with this hearing moving forward next week is, okay, we'll finally see steps forward. But I think that's going to remain the same question is, is this school board really looking out for students?
And really quickly, can you help me crystallize the situation that's happening in Newtown? I know that you've covered this a lot.
Yeah, so a few weeks ago, well, more, a few months ago in the beginning of the year, Newtown was having an issue with book bans. That's something we've kind of seen across the country with different groups who are advocating for books that are inappropriate for children. In Newtown, it was two books. One was Flamer by, by Mike Corrado, another book was Blankets by Craig Thompson, two books that really deal with sexuality. And so that's what a lot of parents were saying is, these books are overly sexual for these students, but the underlying message between these two books is they have LGBTQ themes. And that's something we've seen across the country is a lot of resistance towards being open about sexuality. So for the course of two months, there was a debate in Newtown about whether they should ban these books. And the interesting part was the Mike Corrado book was never checked out since 2021. Blankets by Craig Thompson, I think, was checked out twice. The most recent time was in 2015. So these weren't even books that students were really picking up, but they were, they were good resources in case you needed to read a book and know that you weren't alone in a certain situation. So parents were coming out, they're very vocal that we want to keep these books in our libraries, especially at the high school when students are starting to learn their identity and have questions about that and may not feel comfortable going to adults. So there was a certain back and forth of what to do with these books. At first, it was banning the books. Then it was, okay, you have to get written permission to have these books or from your parent to be able to read them. Ultimately, two of the school board members ended up resigning. That gave a three to one majority for Democrats. And I think the final decision was to keep the books in the libraries, but establish a plan going forward when there are these challenges to these books.
I'm gonna bring back our panel in a second, and I want Nicole and, and Adam and Jonathan to hear what this next person is gonna tell us. I spoke with Leslie Blattow, the President of the New Haven Federation of Teachers, about Newtown. She told me the community should be concerned anytime books are banned, yes. And then she went further to say that manufactured culture wars are taking away from the real problem, a lack of school funding.
Yeah, there are, you know, extreme fringe Board of Ed members in some towns who are, you know, attempting to ban books. And there are students in our cities in Connecticut who can't go to their school library because there's only a part-time person working in that library.
Nicole, what do you make of what she's saying there with a lack of resources in schools while everybody's talking about something else they're kind of making up out of thin air?
Well, you know, I think we need to talk about the sum of the chaos. When we reported this series, the point, the way that we enter it is through folks who have been arrested or charged in this place or been at the root of the, the chaos. But what does this result in? And we talked about it a little earlier in the program. School culture results in, in the ways in which people even desire to work in the school system, right? Can people effectively do their jobs amid all the chaos? I think that's really important. So everything that was a problem pre-2020 or the spring of '21, when we started seeing all of this behavior, is exasperated and it's all tied together. I think we can talk about all these things at the same time because they all play a part in the way that public ed is working today or not working, right? So when you have educators who are being harassed, librarians who are being harassed in, in Arkansas, school board level policy that results in state legislation that allows for librarians to be, to cop felony charges, if some of these books that Jessica is talking about are checked out from not only the school library, but the public library, then yeah, we have problems with people even wanting to occupy the space, right? So I don't think we're talking about different things here. We're talking about issue, layers of issues that contribute to our culture and the way that we operate in the public ed space. It is the sum of the chaos that we need to be concerned about.
Adam, Jonathan, jump into this conversation over what you've heard probably over the last five to 10 minutes here.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, one of the things I've been thinking about a lot lately, especially as, you know, considering the, this idea that, that school boards have not been able or have, have had a more limited capacity to, to deal with some of the real issues of school, right? We're dealing at this moment with a problem with chronic absenteeism in schools, right? Since the pandemic, there have been something more like an additional 6 million students who are missing more than 10% of days from school. And schools are, you know, needing to devote significant resources to doing these lengthy reviews of books in their library. I know there was one estimate that said that one district, you know, had $100,000 worth of man-hours devoted to reviewing books in their library and in their, in their schools. So, so just considering the resources that could be going towards programs that would alleviate chronic absence, programs that could help to get students back engaged, right? We're, we're dealing with a crisis and students not being at, you know, of course, there varies how people consider test scores and the importance of test scores, but, but, you know, test, test scores in English and science and math and civics have been down, right? We're dealing with these several crises in, in schools, and it's important that, that districts are able to devote the resources necessary in order to address those.
Jonathan, in the last couple of minutes here, everything we're talking about raises big questions about the role that schools have in children's lives. How should we be thinking about this?
Well, I think we have to think about them in very fundamental ways, and I think that's what's kind of gotten lost in a lot of the political controversy. You know, everything happens to kids at schools. You know, kids learn, you know, obviously, basic academic principles, but they're learning how to be human beings, to be members of society. You know, schools, as we know them now, were constructed through the Common School Movement started by a Horace Mann and others. And the idea was to create spaces for the development of enlightened citizens who could come together and reason through ways in which to improve our democratic society or our society through democratic processes. You know, the, the, the furthering of our society pretty much depends on the idea of creating uniformly quality schools where kids are learning, again, not only the academics, but then how to live together, how to socially engage with one another, you know, how to, how to take care of themselves and how to take care of, of, of each other as families. And so, you know, now we have very precise fights about specific books to ban, we have very precise fights about the use of race and ethnicity and diversity and curriculum and not, and I, I agree with Nicole in that these kind of overlay over the sort of bare bones of education and schooling, but then at the same time, you know, we do need to find a way to get back to the essence of what public schooling is supposed to be. Because, you know, what we've seen from, for instance, the opportunity studies that have come out of Harvard and, and Brown is that school continues to be the primary gateway for social mobility. If you're a kid born in poverty, a quality education and access to higher education, that's your way forward to a new life of opportunity. And if schools are being hampered by these political debates that are making it harder for school board members to engage in the day-to-day business operation of schooling, well, how are we going to create schools that are these beacons of social mobility?
A very important and lovely way to end the conversation by Jonathan Collins. Thank you so much for coming on. Jonathan, thank you so much for coming on. Nicole, your great work that you've done for ProPublica, we're gonna link that on our website. We're also going to link the work and the great reporting of Jessica Harkey for coming on. Thank you so much for The Connecticut Mirror and Adam Harris, Staff Writer at The Atlantic. That's The Wheelhouse for this week. Thank you so much for listening. Today's show produced by Meg Dalton. Technical producer is Kat Pastor. Thanks to Katie Talarkey for helping us in studio. Download The Wheelhouse anytime on your favorite podcast app. I'm Frankie Graziano. This is The Wheelhouse. Thanks for listening.